So this is the compost, they got that compost cleaned up nice. I'm a gardener, I go through it. Well, every time it's open now.
Any charges? Any charges on the compost?
We'll now call the meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded in the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Ordinance number four five six. We are correcting ordinance number four five five permitting annexation by ordinance. This changes to correct an error from an annexation that occurred in two thousand and was discovered when we submitted to the state of Minnesota the ordinance four five five. Now you've all read it in your packets. Is there any discussion on it? Can I get a motion to approve it?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we will have some discussion on the fiber project.
Yeah, can I go ahead and just summarize?
Yeah.
Yeah, what I, okay. Mister Mayor Council, as we've talked about, there's been some changes and some developments in the last few weeks regarding the fiber project planned to go alongside our wastewater force main. If you recall, we, we had a number of ongoing discussions over the few months about having this fiber line, who's gonna own it, who's gonna help pay for it. It's gone back and forth for many months and we've been working on this since before COVID. What is occurring right now at this point, we had to submit plans to the state for our force main. So we made plans for a fiber line, working with the provider, Arbig, which you were all well aware of, and submitted plans based on that agreement. At that point, we didn't have any financial commitment confirmed. So the council just said, you know, we'll, we'll go ahead and do this. We'll figure out based on after the fact who wants to use it and go from there. We now have interest in the county participating in owning the fiber conduit line or fiber line, I shouldn't use conduit, that's, they're two different technologies. What this would require is a significant change in our wastewater plans and so that's a change that I'm not comfortable authorizing. I did get a number back from our engineer, we're looking at about thirty-five thousand in engineering costs to make these changes. And that number just came in today. What I know thus far to date, we've spent about four hundred and fifty-one thousand on these plans. Seventy percent of those costs are related to the force main fiber routing. So I'm not comfortable making that authorization. I do think there's value in bringing fiber to this community. I think there's value in countywide fiber. But it's really not my decision to make. That's out of my, I guess, ability, comfort level. So I'm looking to you whether you want to proceed with that. The county board meets tomorrow. They're gonna discuss it as well. They have not officially committed to any funding. But there is some potential for federal funding that's coming in from the COVID funds, the second round that was released, the possibility of tapping into that. There's a lot of different variables in place. But what I do know is that it would cost us an additional thirty-five thousand to alter the plans to allow for a countywide, a county-owned fiber all the way. The reason we have to make some alterations is because we were leveraging some existing fiber in the ground with the run with, working with Arbig as a provider. So we need to make up those gaps. What I can tell is it's not completely in right of way. The, the city has six easements. Six easements that we're purchasing as part of this project. There would be some separate permitting required by the county if they were to proceed with this. And they could work it in right of way in a lot of the areas, but there are some, some points where we cannot get it through in right of way and that's why the city's purchasing easements. So I guess I'll leave it up to you for discussion. If you have questions, I just need some direction on how you wanna move forward with this.
So what changes have to be made to the plan?
We were picking up, you if you wanna comment?
They were gonna originally pick it up at Highway ninety-five or then by the big tower. Now it's by Brandy Cabinets, we're gonna pick up the current line. But if we go to a county-owned line, they'll bring it all the way back to the starting point at County Road One by Minnesota Truck Headquarters.
Where's, County Road One where?
By the big flag by Minnesota Truck Headquarters.
Okay.
Where our pipe comes in.
That's where our pipe is tying in, right there.
Where our pipe is tied in, okay. So rather than connecting with what's there, we start all over again?
They would be in their counties owning it and they would want to own the whole way. And that would be paid out of other funds, right? That's not, that's above and beyond what we're talking about today, right, Monty or whoever, somebody correct me?
Yeah, the thirty, the thirty-five thousand is what we would need to alter the plans.
To design.
Yep, to, to update the design plans.
Additional easement writing and all that.
And there is.
How much have you spent on this so far?
Four hundred and fifty-one thousand.
But just for the fiber?
No, not for the fiber. The fiber is, what did he say? Two, three percent or something? I think he said we spent about ten so far just working with this provider.
Ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, in addition, just working with the provider we have. So that's kind of the cost that we've, so to speak, lost.
And the county want, just wants to own it?
Correct.
Can't we make them pay the thirty-five thousand?
That's what we're here for. What do you wanna do?
I mean, they wanna own it. We have a plan.
Yeah, they wanna own it and they really do need, they need to access our construction plans. We're doing the heavy lifting with this. Our pipe goes down eight feet. They're utilizing that dig that we're making for that pipe to put the fiber in.
Have you asked the county if they'd pay for it?
They have not officially committed. We've been to the county a couple of times. They haven't officially committed anything. Is that? Yep.
Our prior plan was we would own the land.
The prior plan was we were going to own the conduit and the reason we went down that road is, is we were the only one paying for it, committed to pay for it at that time. And we had a provider that stepped up and, and we could do that at that point. That was our option.
Is that still a good option?
It's an option. It just would mean that the county would not own it and it's probably an option that's not going to be as beneficial to the, the overall Benton County. That's probably more beneficial to just the city of Foley. But, you know, overall, if you're talking about spreading fiber and, you know, out into the rural areas, maybe not as good of an option. Because the provider has more control in that, that situation.
Well, I, if, if the county wants to take over ownership of that line, I think they should pay the thirty-five thousand for the redoing of all the plans. But the city has still gotta benefit from, from this because we, well, not we so much as Sarah, did a lot of, all the groundwork on it. And then I saw, noticed in the paper the other day where it seemed like it was all the county's idea, which was not, not right at all. But if we, if we've gotta pay an extra thirty-five thousand, the county should throw in on that.
I don't know. I think the ten thousand costs that we've already got into it should be reimbursed also.
How far back would this?
Along with some gratuities of them using our, our properties.
On our timeline, how far back by having the county jump in and pay the ten thousand plus the extra thirty-five, would that set our plans back further?
We don't think so. It's tight, really tight. But the thing is with the fiber, it's a minor adjustment to the, I mean, when you think about the force main, the force main can't move. So that's, this will have to work around this, that force main and where the force main goes, like, there's some places it goes fifteen feet deep in the ground. That fiber's just gonna get pulled right with it because you cannot alter that foot-wide force main. The, our engineers have not indicated that it would set us back. If we don't have clear consensus soon, it could. We're still on track for an August bid from what the last discussion was. We, we had a phone or a Zoom meeting last week. Was that Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday or Friday.
Yeah.
Well, could, could we also apply for the federal funds?
You're too late for that.
We're too late?
Yeah. This, like I said, this conversation started over a year ago. You know, we needed to have that if we were looking at a different option. You know, those things would've had to have been applied for.
Okay. And the new infrastructure bill that hasn't passed yet was gonna include?
You mean the federal infrastructure?
Yeah.
I've been putting in some projects for that, but I don't know if this'll be too late or not. That I don't know for certain. I'm just saying the federal grant.
But the bill hasn't even passed yet. How could it be too late?
I don't know what the time, I think we're waiting to see. We're, there's a deadline of this Friday to put in requests for that, for the appropriations of that. I don't know what the timeline on that is. I think you're just putting anything you have in and seeing what happens unless somebody else has any other knowledge. How much more staff time do you want us to invest in this? That's the, the one thing I do have to remind you of. And you said me, but it's not, it's, it's Mark. It's, it, you know what I mean? We, we have to get a clear consensus and move ahead because you're just sucking all of our time on this project.
Go ahead. Yeah.
So why would the county be interested in owning this? Originally, when we, when we got interested, it was, it was to allow us to connect to our facility in East St. Cloud. As you may know, we have a human services facility in East St. Cloud. There's about thirty employees there now. And most likely, that presence is gonna grow and grow over the years and I, I foresee it being a very long-term presence. So we like the idea of actually being able to connect our facility here in Foley directly to East St. Cloud. Right now, we're paying about eleven hundred dollars a month in commercial internet service for that facility and this would allow us to get away from that cost. So it, like, for example, right now, we connect directly to our hive facility in Amala Town. So think of it kinda like that. Instead of it being one mile, it's eleven miles. But really, the same concept and it makes sense, we think, for us to own it. So we're not really in mercy of a commercial provider that may control that fiber. Because again, we foresee having a facility in East St. Cloud for foreseeable future. That's really what got us initially interested in having ownership of, of the fiber itself.
If I could add to, just so we're clear too, with the county owning it too, they would also need to utilize a portion likely of our one hundred by one hundred where our lift station is going. They'd also likely need to construct a building there on our easement. So that would be part of this as well too. We're looking at that.
One, one thought I forgot to mention, Mayor, members of the council. I know Sarah's mentioned, of course, that the city's own internet needs should be addressed. And I think we're totally, of course, open to that. Where, whereby the city would have some dedicated use of, of certain number of strands to meet the city's needs. So of course, totally open to that.
Yeah.
Right. It's, that's certainly not a concern for us.
Yeah, and that, and that would be one. And then with, with our prior discussions with Arbig, you know, we talked about that and then we talked about the buildout of the city. We, you know, those are the discussions and things that the, the council needs to decide on, on what type of relationship we would have with Benton County moving forward for all of this project and, and owning this utility.
Now, if the county owned it, would we have to pay them to use it?
That'd be part of the negotiation.
My initial reaction to that would be no. And in recognition for the city's tremendous investment, you know, that allowed this fiber to come. I can't foresee us asking an ongoing lease cost like that. I think that would be a fair exchange for all the work that the city has done to make this happen. You know, by the way, I know it was the city that got the eight hundred dollars of bonding money, not Benton County. Thank you. The reporter, the reporter got it wrong.
And would the county be in favor of picking up the additional expense?
I should, I should be here. You know, Mister Mayor, is, we'll discuss it tomorrow at our board. I mean, and Sarah is right. I mean, we have, we have about eight million dollars of, of American Rescue Plan Act funding headed our way really soon. But I need to ask the county board to find out what they're comfortable with tomorrow. And I really hope to walk out, I mean, tomorrow with a firm commitment, action, a motion that's been passed to say, okay, we're willing to contribute this amount towards this project. Cause I know Sarah, Sarah needs an answer. Sure. So I know, I know we gotta ask him, are we, what are we willing to pay towards the fiber itself, plus this additional engineering cost that the city's gonna bear to make changes to your plans?
And I'll continue to, there will be an agreement and I've already had conversations with our city attorney on that. There will be some type of agreement because the county will need to utilize our six easements that we're purchasing. And those have not, so you know, that, those costs have not been incurred yet. That's still a developing process. But there'll be in some type of an agreement on those easements specifying that it can be used for both communications and also wastewater treatment. And then we'll have to figure out some type of arrangement, you know, what does the county provide us and so forth. So there'll be some terms that'll have to be negotiated with those. Besides those six easements, the county would have to then apply for a right-of-way permit for the rest of it. And, and then there would be a, basically it would be bid together. That's what they're, the engineers recommending. We would bid this component of the project as part of our large overall project. And then there'd be a separate line item tracking those costs. And then there'd be some type of reimbursement agreement with the county to pay for that. So just so you know how this will operate. And this stuff is done all the time. We, we track different things. We bill other agencies. It's not an uncommon practice. We just have to have agreements in place.
So how much is our commercial internet at this point? How much do we pay?
I, I can't even tell you. I'd have to, there's so many components of the bill and the internet. I'd have to look. It's nothing crazy. Probably a couple hundred bucks.
But we don't have, we don't.
We don't have quality Wi-Fi at, what, this is the only building, so.
We have a need. There's no doubt we have a need.
You know, I would like to see it at the park or at least at the scout house if we would have Wi-Fi there.
There's a lot of those, those items in discussion, you know, where do we need it and the requests we get for utilization. So definitely part of the overall picture if that's what we so choose.
Maybe our public parking lot so people can do their homework at midnight. So those things aren't worked out yet?
No, and, and you know, when we were looking at this, we own the conduit. So we put in the conduit, we had all the bargaining power, so to speak, cause we're, we were gonna own the conduit. So everyone to put the fiber in there. That's when we were going to, you know, and we had some tentative things worked out with Arbig, you know, these are the kind of things we're looking for and so forth. But with this, we wouldn't own it. So we would have to come up with an agreement now, you know, and how this would work as this goes in so that we know moving ahead what we're getting into and what we're, what's expected out of both parties.
And you guys will find out tomorrow at your meeting if it's going to.
Yes, sir. That's the plan. Yeah.
Do we have a consensus on how they're leaning?
Well, I, I know there's a consensus for our county board to own it. We really, we haven't had any specific conversations about what we would actually contribute in the dollars towards the, the, the fiber itself. And that's, that's my goal for tomorrow, is to really try to nail that number down. Yep.
Well, I think we should ask for it. The ten thousand we've spent, thirty-five we have to spend. And then a portion, you know, some, some portion of the cost of those easements.
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna complicate things, but that's one leg of the project. If you recall, we're also putting in fiber along the Highway twenty-three. We've made that decision. There's a couple of different variables. I guess right now, is the coun, is the council comfortable if they cover those costs at least to move ahead at this point and then we have to go back and address the other items? I don't want you to make a decision. I know this is still kind of a new change in plans, but I also need to know, do we need to route? The, the biggest concern right now is that force main route.
Yeah.
And then we gotta tackle those other items. So if that's what you're gonna ask for at a minimum, I think that's what we go to the county board with. Get their thoughts. But I think we need to make sure we understand there's other components of this project.
Yeah, because if we're putting in the fiber in the city, it's for the benefit of the county then.
And, and I think there's some partnership there. And I, we've had some discussions. I think they're open to that conversation too.
Because we're, we're laying the, why would we lay the fiber if they own the whole thing?
But somebody should lay it. So that's what we determined at the city. We, somebody should lay it and put a placeholder.
Well, we want it for our city, yeah.
Right. I mean, to the extent that this goes, closes the gap, it gets the fiber from, before it comes to town, our goal, I think we would be interested in being a part of that, of course. And that, this can be set up, the project that's on the Highway twenty-three, for, for some part of it.
Yeah, and, and you know, where the city was, we just, when we decided to go ahead with this, that's why we decided, you know, we're running those other utilities. Hey, we need to throw this in now because what's the point of running it halfway and not the rest of the way? And so I think, yeah, those, those items are very important. At least they're in, there's a placeholder in. So I commend you for authorizing that.
So do we need to make a motion or not really?
I would prefer a motion because if you're authorizing me, you know, us to, to direct staff to spend money, I wanna know that you approve that. We've spent a lot of money, but I, you know, it's coming, coming to the point where I'd be careful.
Okay, um, I'm okay with the county owning it as long as they pay the thirty-five thousand and ten thousand. And then there should be some more benefits from the county to the city because we are the ones that are putting in the lot, the pipeline in there and it's because of the pipeline that we can get that other line in. We should get some benefits out of it.
I would like to see a, a reasonable partnership between both entities. I, I, what I don't wanna see, we've made great strides in working with the township. I'd like to see our relationship go further along by being equal part, partners in this. So just to be on this, on the safe side of things. So we don't, somewhere down the line, the county might say, well, we own it, so this is what you have to do. I, I would like to see a spirit of cooperation for sure. Not just one entity owning it. Why can't the city and the county work together at it?
Well, I would think one or the other should own it. I can't, you know.
Before I go partnership, I would say we'd own it first before I go partnership. They're either gonna own it or we're gonna own it.
I would prefer to see them own it.
I would too, but if they can't work with us, I would go the other option. Everybody be pulling their hair off, but.
If our county board is inclined to pay for the majority of the cost of the fiber itself, they probably would wanna own it too.
Yeah, that.
We're estimating the cost is to install the fiber roughly three hundred thousand to get the fiber in the ground.
Yeah, and I, like I say, I'm all for the county owning it as long as the city benefits from it.
Sure.
Because we're, like we say with the pipeline, it's the reason we're gonna be able to get that line in.
Well, you know, Mayor, members of the council, I think you can embody that idea in an agreement with the city where then the city gets the benefit. You get, you get access to the, to the infrastructure to use for city purposes. I think that's how you make that become a form of reality. Is that we have to go into some form of agreement that we have with the city, even if we own the fiber itself.
Well, I think our goal is to get internet to everybody who's in Foley. And we don't want the county to cut out this pe, you know, this plot of land or that, refuse to extend it. Because we've come this far with it. We, we want high-speed internet for our city.
Sure. The way I understand it, is this fiber is such a capacity, it's tremendously more than the county would ever need. So there's enormous capacity that's left over for residents and business. We apparently would just use a very small part of this fiber that's installed from St. Cloud. So there's lots left over.
Well, are you gonna expand into the county?
That's a really interesting question. I don't really have answers there. We've been talking about, and I should mention Commissioner Scott Johnson's here and so is Man of the VP. We've had some fairly lengthy conversations and meetings here about kinda like the next steps. But I don't really have answers for you today on who will the providers be which bring it to the city, bring it to the rural areas. Those are really unanswered questions at this point. How does that happen? Who does it?
Yeah.
I think from what I'm hearing, the desire and the intention is there, absolutely. Our board's really excited about using these, the Rescue Plan Act dollars for broadband, absolutely. It's just the details of how it's gonna work, I don't really know. I don't really know yet. I don't know.
Yeah, can I?
Sure.
Is it, we've talked about this before. Is it a safe comment to make that the, the city supports the expansion of fiber in the city limits and also throughout Benton County? I mean, is that a safe comment to make? I, I think, I think Monty's right. We, we don't know the details on how that's going to all work. But I think it is important, and I think I mentioned this in my memo, we need to, to make sure that we do what we can to partner. We, we do what we can to try to get this project, but also recognize the work that's been done. I think it's fair to say that the city has done a lot of work and a lot of push for this project already and I think wants to just be recognized in that capacity too.
Well, I, I would like some guarantee that the city of Foley, everybody in it, whether it's a business or a residence, would have access to that high-speed cable.
So like a build-out plan or something?
Yeah, that if, if we annex land and it ends up having houses on it, that those people in Foley can get the internet. Now, it would be great, I, you know, expanding to the rural area is a lot tougher because you're so spread out. But Foley is a pretty small area with, you know, pretty dense population. And I think our purpose initially was to get internet for Foley. For businesses and for, you know, people that need it for all kinds of things, particularly children nowadays. So I would like that guarantee, not that, well, we'll get to it, but if, if Foley has citizens, that they can get internet.
Would the council be, okay then, we, we go to the county board with that minimum of the cost that we need to address now to make the plan changes? But we still have the easement work and, you know, those other fine details and we continue the negotiations. So if the county board agrees to put that money up, are you comfortable doing that and then just continuing that negotiations on how we, or how the whole project turns out? And, and how the city's serviced and, and what we benefit from it? Is that something that the council is comfortable doing?
Yeah, it's just that they understand that those things are gonna be addressed. And, you know, they're adding, they're duplicating what's already there, I understand why, but we were gonna just take up where the last line ended.
Yeah, we were looking for the most cost-effective way to get services to the city.
So if they want to own the whole thing, are we, are they still gonna be in our...
Our trench?
Our tr, I'm gonna say, yeah, our trench.
They need our trench, yes, I mean, that's a big part of it, leveraging that construction is huge in this project. And it's important for us.
But you won't have to add trench for the fiber.
No, our, our pipe's going down eight feet deep, so we're doing all the hard work and getting it...
But they want, they wanna put fiber in starting past 95 to the...
Yeah, but the, the pipe is still 12-inch pipe, that's going down eight feet in the ground.
And it's going that far anyway.
Yeah, we, we had to purchase a bit more easement, maybe a little bit of width on easement, but not anything, I don't think that's detrimental. I mean, the rest of it is the six easements, and then you got the right-of-way. And they, they do place this fiber line alongside of the pipe. That is something that has been, the engineer said there is no other way to do it, they don't want them directly on top of each other. But this fiber line is, what, 36 inches in the ground? Yeah.
Okay.
Does anyone have a motion? Well, I'd like to kinda...
What's our timeline, 'cause I'd like to see what they're gonna come up with.
Well, we, we don't have time, though.
I know, I know, I...
You don't, we, we're running on borrowed time now.
As long as the county wants to own it, as far as I'm concerned, we will let them have ownership of it. But they will pay the 10,000 and 35,000 we have already, well, the 10,000 we've already stuck in, and the 35,000 that's gonna take to redo all the plans again. And then they will own the line, but yet the city will get some benefits out of it, because it is our pipeline that they are using in order to get their wire to the town.
In a written agreement, because they're gonna have equipment posted on our properties also.
Everything should be written.
So is that a motion?
Is there any other discussion, otherwise that will be my motion.
What is, are we on borrowed time right now?
Yes, we are.
Do we need to second it before we have discussion, or no? I'll second it.
We have a motion?
The motion was made and seconded.
Okay.
But now we'll have any other discussion.
I didn't know you made the motion, okay. So, how much time do we have? I have no idea, I mean, they've asked for us to keep moving on this, and that's why we had the special meeting today.
You are cutting into the time when we put out specs for bid, that's what really you're, you're gonna pressure. If we want to hold a bid date in August, you know, you have to give your contractors and so much time with plans and stuff like that. So, any amendment we have has to go through the state, and then it comes back and, and gets prepped for that bid package. And we're talking out-of-state big contractors bidding this project, so we do need to allow for, it's a very complex project, we need to allow for adequate time for that review of plans. I know that's not your answer specifically, but...
I'd just, I'd just like to see some confirmed commitment after their meeting.
I know.
You know, I mean, let's say they drag their feet for whatever, still puts us in a bind.
Well, if they don't, you guys have the right to just say we're moving ahead, I mean...
I think the county knows, we've had the discussion in our meetings, that our timeframe is August, and they've been...
So could they join in later on, if we went ahead and said, we'll take care of it for now?
It's not all the way in the pipeline, there's a section missing. We gotta know if we need to put that in the plans or not. And we also gotta know, we were talking conduit, that put, you put fiber in, the county wants to do armored fiber, which is a completely different... It's, it's still the same size, but it's a different type of mechanism.
So by all means, we could have some sort of agreement commitment by our next meeting? First Tuesday.
That all kinda comes down to attorneys.
Yeah.
Words and hours, I can't predict.
I don't think you're ever gonna have an agreement by now.
I don't think there's, I don't think that's possible, not with the workload and everything else we got going, I think that's gonna be really difficult.
And the provider?
Yep.
Who, which provider you're gonna work with? And you have to do RFPs on that, and...
Well, I guess my question is, okay, let's say this motion passes, what's to say that Benton County doesn't drag their feet to slow our project down even more? We're kinda, still kinda in the same boat?
We own the timeframe, and I think the county's agreed to work with that.
Well, and, and we've been very clear, like I, I've talked to you before, that the pipeline will go, we're keeping our schedule. We've, you know, we have to keep our schedule, it's too critical for what we need to do here, you know?
I wanna keep the timeframe, I wanna keep moving, that's my biggest concern here. We can't stop.
No.
No.
Going to St. Croix?
Yeah.
There were so many numbers I don't know.
So, I have a question, who's gonna negotiate these other details? Are we gonna have our lawyer work on it and the county lawyer work on it?
Who do you want to negotiate?
Well...
I will negotiate for you, but then I need, you need to have, prove whatever I negotiate with, just like we do when we buy property and so forth.
Well, somebody has to draft an agreement. So who's gonna do that?
Our attorney can do it, but that's gonna cost money too, so, whoever we think is best to do it. Our attorney has indicated he is willing to help facilitate the project, and whatever the council so chooses needs to get done.
Because it's kind of open-ended, we're talking $45,000 plus all these other easements and permits and...
Is the council supportive of spending the money to change the plans? That's the first question, do you want to hold that back? We're gonna, we'll do it, but then we, that's a risk we take, but we still own it as far as you're concerned at this point, it's in our plans, until we get a agreement in place? I'm just trying to facilitate moving the project forward, if that's what we want to do.
Well, we want to keep the project moving forward. Now, you guys won't decide until tomorrow how you're...
What was, what was the holdup when we started doing this? That the county got involved? It, it's like they weren't really concerned.
I don't know what it's really, it was a holdup, I think it was a, you got some new people involved, had some, had their own ideas about how things could possibly go. And that kinda, I think, carried the day of doing this, instead of the contract going in, the armored fiber, and that changed things, and then us owning it. So I think you would just see an entrance of some new folks in this process who have different ideas, that's probably what changed, changed things a bit. But we've known about this concept for quite a long time, though.
The agreement's gonna take months, the final agreement, I think, in my opinion, to... You're gonna bring providers in, and who's gonna build, I mean, another provider's not gonna build out Foley, we're gonna have to, it's not feasible, probably.
And, and really, until we sign something, we have to put it in the plans, it's gonna be the city's until there's an agreement with the county, that's our easement, you know, unless we sign something. It's, and it's our project, it's under our umbrella, I mean, really, it's, the county really can't get access to it if it's in our plans and specs, and we authorize that until we agree. You know, that's the other thing.
Yes, Scott.
First of all, I gotta make very clear, obviously, I'm not representing the county board, but I can give you my opinion, right? Monty hit it on the head, I believe, when some new people came in, myself, Commissioner Kapinski, who's got a lot of background in fiber and his business, right away, the antennas went up, because this is an all, just something that will service Foley, which we obviously know is needed. But from my perspective, we can get it out rurally potentially then too. I think there's a lot of commitment from myself, potentially Commissioner Kapinski, and hopefully the rest of the board, to get this done. This is a once-in-a-lifetime thing, I think, for all of us, that'll take us well, well into the future. I, from my perspective, I have a very high commitment level from the county to be able to help get this project through. That's speaking from myself, okay? I've sat on this committee with Commissioner Kapinski, Monty, Amanda, Sarah, Mark, and we've hashed out a lot of these smaller details. But I think what they're asking for right now is your consideration to allow us to meet tomorrow, hopefully make a decision that we're gonna pull the trigger on this fiber, and we're gonna own it, and then we're gonna work out the details later. I think it goes without saying that Foley's gotta be serviced, there's no question about that. But this has got the capacity to go beyond that, and that's what's really brought this to light, since some new people have joined the board. And, and quite frankly, American Rescue Plan money, that's also something that threw the flags up, here's some dollars that we could potentially access. So I, it's very important to me at the county, I believe it's very important to Amanda. I mean, we've got the Highway 23 corridor, that that means also, also means Foley now with your OAA agreement, and obviously being able to expand out into the rural area, so that's my perspective. I can tell you, as your representative from the county, it's a very high commitment for me to be able to service Foley and the rural area. South and east of here, there's hardly anything. So we can get that main line here to Foley, I'm quite certain we can figure out the details from there. But we've gotta get that done, and we, we want to go all the way to MTH. So, any questions for me that I'm not making clear? Again, I'm, I, this is my opinion, it's not the county board's opinion, so I want to be really clear about that.
You realize we want to keep moving forward.
Abs, absolutely, we want you to keep moving forward, absolutely. There's no reason for us to hold you up, that's why, we just, we need to come to an agreement, like just pull the trigger on this. We have no intention of holding anything up. From my perspective, I don't know why we would.
I think, did your motion address that the county would, the request the county cover the additional costs?
Yep.
So, at this point, they, they, the county board would have to, if they were to approve that and move forward, I think we have an understanding, but the county board's also taking some risks. I think we just want to be certain we don't do this plan, and then you guys back out, and then we're out $35,000.
Well, I can, I can tell you this, I'm not backing out, and I'm not gonna speak for Commissioner Kapinski, but he's got a lot of time and effort stuck into this too, I highly doubt he will. I can't speak for the other three commissioners, obviously. But there's never been any indication to me in any of our conversations that we're not highly interested in this.
So, then I think we put that to them and, and have them commit to that, you know, at the board meeting tomorrow, and say, we're not doing it unless you commit to cover those costs, and at least we can keep it moving forward. And we'll address those other items as we, we go. But it's on the record, we still have other items that we need to work out. I think we all understand that.
That's the way my motion went.
Thank you.
Okay, we had a second on that motion, now is there any other discussion?
I'm okay with that.
No other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, it carried.
The next item we need to close session for.
Okay.
I'll update you.
I'd like to thank the county people for coming down here.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll be there to help.
Do you just wanna check this text when we come back? Okay. See, I just wanted to create a here, um, there's a...
Scott, leave.
Okay.
Yeah, he must have left, there he is.
Yeah, he wasn't off.
Okay. All right, so just other business...
3:17, we will reopen, reconvene our regular city council meeting.
Okay, a couple of things, just, you saw the land use plan update, I sent you the email with the survey, if you're interested in that poll, we've developed other comments, so if you're gonna check that out, we're working on a joint meeting with the council planning commission to discuss that map and, and those items. Very, very interested in the undevelopable areas, pay close attention to those red areas. That, that was very eye-opening to me. And then the second item I really wanted to discuss, was the lifting of the mask mandate. Like I said, we follow the governor's orders, so I have directed employees that we don't need to follow the mask mandate inside. We still need to follow it when we go into like businesses that, you know, have it, so like Marcos and Chuck from Meter and Dubraki, and they have a mask mandate, you gotta follow it.
Courthouse still recommends it.
What?
Courthouse still recommends it.
Recommend it, but I mean, we, we still need to be mindful and follow them when they're posted in other locations or private people ask us, we gotta follow it. I need some direction on how you want to handle the other procedures. Social distancing, how we're gonna handle incity vehicles that they're riding, how are we gonna handle quarantining, do you still want to stick with the CDC guidelines? You know, we do have people vaccinated, we also have people that are not vaccinated. Just so we're clear, are we still following those other procedures? We just want to be certain we're, we're explaining or implementing the correct policies of the council to the rest of the staff.
I don't think those guys working out there have to mandate masks.
No, I wouldn't mandate masks, but I'm worried about the other things.
You know, do you want them riding around in trucks together?
I don't see that being a problem.
Okay, and that's, I mean, I need to know the council's advice.
I don't know. I'd rather see that than having three vehicles, three guys going out to whatever, that they couldn't be riding with each other than... I, I, I don't have a problem with that, but that's up to you guys.
Okay, well, my, I, my personal feeling, I think they pulled it off too quickly. I would have liked to have seen the masks and social distancing still going for a while yet. We're only up to like 60% have been vaccinated. But because of what the CDC put out, I know nobody's gonna want to wear a mask, which I guess I don't really have a problem with. But I want you to, I want everybody to still try and socially distance if you can. Don't get into groups where you're sitting there for half an hour bullshitting or something.
I haven't been following the rules.
And it must be clear, we, we have no control over what people do in their private lives, that's their private business. I am only talking on the job, and, and so we are, you know, enforcing the correct standards that the council wants us to enforce.
I know it's policy or whatever, but I could see sometimes it being hindrance for these guys because of that mandate, you know?
Well, the, the mask-wearing would be for the protection of the unvaccinated people? Is that correct?
There, there's a lot of opinions when it comes to that.
It'll never reach 100%.
So, are you okay, you know, we, we have you still distanced and we're using the shields. I'm just doing that out of, out of abundance of caution, because I, it wasn't that difficult to do, and, and we can change that too. But, like, the CDC still recommends social distancing, they still recommend, I mean, if somebody gets sick, what do you want to do there? Do we make them quarantine? I mean, that's what we typically do, if they're not vaccinated, they have to quarantine.
I think we still stick with that.
I think we have to, because our employees are dealing with the public. So if, you know, if, if they've got the virus, we don't really want them mixing with the public.
And understand that...
While they're on the job, I mean...
And understand, some of these procedures are a little more strict when it comes to like medicals and things, like the police and fire have their own policies, because they have to do that. But I'm talking just everybody else. So what do you think about social distancing? Yes, no?
Yes. I, I think we can still social distance with the shields, I don't see anything wrong with that.
So, how are they gonna do that when they have these parties in the park for graduation?
Oh, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying at all, I, I don't, I, I'm just asking what you want us to do for our employees, that's all I'm asking.
Just for the workers here, Gary.
Yeah, I'm just talking workers.
You're pretty quiet.
I'm waiting for direction.
We just want direction.
Because I know we have one person already that was in close contact with somebody that is in the hospital now with COVID. Because I know we have one person already that was in close contact with somebody that is in the hospital now with COVID. And he is a city employee. Now, he should definitely not be, you know, he's definitely gotta wear a mask if he's gonna be close to any other people working for the city, and he's gotta try and social distance.
There was no policy, is he, was he vaccinated?
No.
No, we follow the quarantine policies, but, and this started before the governor lifted the mandate. This, we followed our quarantine policy.
Did you set forth some policy that the city be vac, that the city employees be vaccinated?
No, we just, we encouraged it. We just encouraged it and allowed people to go on, on company time if they had access to it. No, we didn't require it.
Not, not everybody did it, you know, which is fine. I mean, not everybody's gonna do it, but that's, that's kinda why I wanna see the social distancing up.
What do you think? I don't know if we have fifty percent, you know. My guess is we might be close to fifty percent of our full-time. Now, I don't think we even have that.
What's it?
Of vaccinated, like, you know, how many people are vaccinated of our staff? Maybe fifty? It's probably close to what the state is, as far as percentage-wise. So that's all I need, just give me direction, whatever.
If they have to quarantine, it's gonna, I mean, they're gonna not come to work and they're gonna be paid, right? For two weeks?
No, no.
If they're quarantined?
If they're quarantined, they're, they have to use their own sick and vacation. There's no policy anymore.
That's over.
That's over. And they've had access to the, you know, the, the idea is they've had access to the vaccine, you know.
So it's on their dime and they have to, well, if they, if they're not vaccinated and they've had exposure, I think we have to have them quarantined because they deal with the public. You know, even our maintenance guys, there's, you know, there's a leak. They come talk to the property.
No, and, yeah, and I don't think that we're, our, when you talk about social distancing, we know there are certain situations you can't, or you have a short period of time. That happens. I think what we're talking about is how do you wanna handle those other, maybe situations that, maybe more social situations at work? Those type of items, you know, are, are we just a, no social distancing, you know, we're not worried about it? Or is that a requirement like they recommend? That's, I think, where we're more concerned. In a lot of the work that we do, we can social distance, you know, whether it's spaced out desks or they're outside working, you know, there's a lot of other variables.
I think we could still keep that in place, social distance.
Yep.
Distancing.
Indoors.
Indoors.
Indoors, yeah. Outdoors, it's no problem, pretty much. And the, the city workers should just keep all that in mind, and if, if they're part of the fifty percent or whatever that haven't been vaccinated, you know, then definitely, shh, you know, keep your social distancing.
Common sense rule.
Yep, they just gotta think and do it.
Personal responsibility.
Okay, so if I'm clear, we're, we're doing quarantining. No mask though is okay, but social distancing indoors?
Indoors, yes.
Okay.
It's suggested.
It's suggested or required? That's what I, you say suggested, that's a totally different-
Required.
I know.
I say required.
Required, of course.
Required's easier, yes. One or the other.
What does the governor say about social distancing?
They still recommend social distancing.
They do? Oh, well, okay.
Well, I don't understand. They said you could have weddings, but you can't dance. What the hell's the difference here?
I don't know.
Okay.
That's not, that, we're not concerned with that.
Well, I know, but we're talking about the same thing. You can, you guys can work over here, but three guys can't do a manhole cover because you're grouped together.
Well, no, no, no. The guys outside, working outside, they, you know, they can be in close proximity and, you know-
Well, and, and I think when we have, like, when we have something social, like we have a snack, you know, we just space out at the tables. I think we're just trying to use a little common sense. That's all.
Just don't, don't get into groups too much and-
You guys have lunch, I'll wait you up for after.
I, this is only on, I, I don't want anything to do with the other stuff that's-
Yeah, I know, I, I know where you're coming from. I don't, I just-
There's at least three of us that have required the social distancing.
Okay, so social, does that answer your question? And you're okay with riding in vehicles, like multiple people riding in vehicles?
I am.
It's nice out. They can open the window.
Yeah, and as long as they are, you know, it's, it's not a half-hour drive or something like that, you know, I mean, most of the time it's gonna be five, ten minutes, and they'll be out of the truck again.
Okay.
No harm to ruin each other and-
Use a little common sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that reasonable, Katie?
It's gonna be less for you.
I think that's all we had. So that, if we're good with that, then I think that's all.
And you, yeah, that, there will, there will be quarantine though. We said that, right?
I, I think you have to. Actually, I think we could get into more legal trouble if we don't.
If there's-
Um, and somebody else gets ill that we didn't act.
That's all, that's all we're concerned.
Yep.
Just, I'm, I'm thinking from a worker's comp standpoint, we could probably be in more trouble if we didn't, so.
Yep, we'll keep that.
But, but if you are fully vaccinated, you do not need to quarantine. So if somebody is exposed and they come and, you know, nope, I'm fully vaccinated, that is not a requirement, and that is following the standards.
But did they change that from fourteen days to ten days?
Yes, they did.
I think, I think they changed that to minimum, yeah.
But like, we also have to, so that's what we require. We follow those rules, um, like the school. If you're in the school, that's different. They have to follow their own plan. We can't do anything about that. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's done.
Off the docket, what kind of seating, what kind of seating numbers? Okay.